Because I'm the best baby that they never gotta keep. One, two, three, they're gonna run back to me. They always wanna come, but they never wanna leave my exit. And oh, 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 they haunt me. Like, oh, 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 they want me to make them up, up, up. They're all love, love. My exit. And oh, 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 they haunt me. Like, oh, 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 they want me to make them up, up, up. They're all love, love. Let's just say no.
Gracias, thank you. What's wrong, Mijo?
Donating to a pet's medical care can keep families together. Pets and people belong together. Learn more at petsandpeopletogether.org.
Okay, we'll get started. Okay, call to order the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four. Let's quick call roll, please.
Bashin.
Here.
Higgins.
Here.
Kirchdorfer.
Here.
Manke.
Here.
McDaniel.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And Van Campen.
Here. Item three, approval, April first, twenty twenty-four, Village Board meeting minutes if correct, and corrections of mistakes if any.
Motion to approve.
Tim and Carleen. Changes, comments, corrections. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you. Item four, public comments. This party of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. Board members may discuss procedure matters relating to the information, such as whether the information should be directed to staff, referred to a committee, or placed on a future board agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Do we have anyone here for public comments? Anyone? Thank you. Item five, approval vouchers in the amount of six hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. Motion, staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Jason and Amanda. Questions, comments? On the vouchers. Anyone? Hearing none, all those in favor, oh, sorry, roll call, please.
Bashin.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Manke.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Van Campen.
Yes.
And Kirchdorfer.
Yes.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda, none. Item seven, report of committees, items for discussion and/or possible action. A ad hoc public art committee. Public art locations and outward selections for the twenty twenty-four Sculpture Tour. Committee and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Amanda? Sorry, Amanda and Jason. Someone to speak to this?
Sure. I'm proud to be a part of the Public Art Committee. A lot of people with a lot of talent on that group makes up for my lack of talent. But the committee has worked hard to select sculptures to replace the ones that have been around town for the past year. Eight are from Oshkosh, five are from local artists. Randy Glisch, the Chair of the Public Art Committee, is here. And he and group members do a fantastic job of raising funds to cover the costs of having these to enrich the village, so there is no cost to taxpayers. And we're thankful to Public Works, who really helps us put these in good locations and secure them for everybody to enjoy. So we had a voting process. I've got to say, the Art Committee has great taste, because oftentimes, we'd select some, and then we'd find out they've sold, because someone bought them and had to select others. So, so you can see the selections that will be placed around town. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure Randy is as well.
Anyone? Amanda?
These look great. I'm really excited to see these around town. So, nice job, Public Art Committee. That's great.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Thank you for coming in, Randy. Item seven B, Park Board. Review conceptual plans for a green new preserve outlet, eleven park improvements submitted by Veridian Homes.
Yeah, we can talk about this. This is a, typically, when a subdivision comes in, they will dedicate park land to the village, and then as the building permits are, they pay a fee for park land, but then they also, as the impact fees are collected at building permit time, we use those to eventually then build out these parks. Veridian has had a model, which I like. It's kind of, it's nice, because it, Veridian constructs the park improvements, and at the time of their construction of that neighborhood. And in turn, it means that the park is there for use right off the bat, even for the first several residents that are moving into that development. So what would happen in this situation, what's happening in this situation, is the work still has to be publicly bid. It exceeds twenty-five thousand dollars, and it is a public improvement. So, but Veridian takes care of that portion of it. And basically, there's kind of a, I don't know how, we talked about this at the meeting a little bit, but each building permit that's pulled, right now, the impact fee for parks, I believe, is twenty-three seventy-four, twenty-three hundred and seventy-four dollars per dwelling unit. That is paid as the impact fee. And we will work with our great legal mind over here at the end of the table to make sure that that agreement not only meets the public bidding laws, but then also that the funds are balanced out, you know, because it's never a perfect mix of what you're collecting and what's spending it, you know, it could be over, it could be under a little bit. But I think the way we looked at it, it would be pretty straightforward. I know I said I'd have some numbers for tonight, too, didn't I? I did not. I may have said that.
I don't think anyone remembers, so I think we're good.
Well, I just remembered. But it does, it does get all worked out, because there are, I think there were seventeen building permits that's been, that have been pulled so far, I think was the right number. So there's already been almost thirty-some-odd thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand dollars of park impact fees already collected that we could use towards this, too, if we had to make any village contribution. But the applicant is here to kind of present what they have shown the Park Board. And I have some update, we had some, we had some staff comments. At the time, I've got their project pulled up here. I think I just want to be, just so everyone is aware, this is North Prairie Parkway. It ends right here, right now. This is Maryhill Drive, and it ends right about, well, actually, right about up here right now. Phase one is kind of what I've circled here, and then phase two is all of, kind of about there, pretty close. They will be, this, this area, Outlet here, we'll, we'll be talking about at a later date, but that's, or it's part of phase two, and that's not really a park. It is a park open space, but it's not like park playground, but it is walking trails, grass, trees, everything back there. But what they'll be talking about tonight is, in this area, which includes a small area up here dedicated for park, and then this is dry detention basin, stormwater type of arrangement. All right, you can introduce yourself and have, walk us through here, what you're proposing.
Okay, sounds good. I'm Matt Salzberry, landscape architect for Denofrio Cotkey, who's the engineer for Veridian. So we were brought in to provide a park in this area, few goals for it. Want to provide play equipment and opportunities for ages two through twelve, so we have a wider range of ages that can use the park. Want to provide an unprogrammed lawn space, so that you can throw a ball, or a frisbee, or play a little bit of small game soccer in there. Provide some seating amenities, landscaping for shade, and to frame up what we have going on there, and then connect all that to the public sidewalk and the path that runs north, south, through the rest, or through the west of that site. So, here's our design. You can see it's connected to both the sidewalk along Savannah Drive and the path that goes along the west side of the site. Within the playground itself, we've got a play structure that encompasses both the two-to-five age range and the five-to-twelve age range. We've got some swings, three swings and a swing set there. And then we have an Omni Spinner, which is a modified merry-go-round. That was requested by the Park Board specifically for accessibility. It's a little safer than a merry-go-round, and can accommodate all sorts of.
Adaptive, adaptive play.
Correct. Yep. On the south of that oval, we've got three benches. Those benches would be backless, so that one could view what's going on in the play area, and then also view the natural space behind it in that dried detention basin. There was some discussion on what type of surfacing we wanted to go in here, and it was the Village Park Board's preference to have a harder surface in there, a poured-in-place rubber surface, so that we made an accommodation for that, and we can kind of talk about that as we go here. They also asked us to update the swings. We provided a bucket seat, so that a little more, more inclusive for accessibility. And then we carried that sidewalk all the way around the perimeter of that play space, so that you got some good, good, good space to stand up to the side with strollers and whatnot. So, pretty simple design. If we want to, next page. Go, can you go one back?
Sorry.
Kind of show you the extensive, the landscaping that we have in there. Quite a few shade trees, want to provide some, some good shade opportunities. Maintenance-wise, we're not introducing any shrubs. It's all ornamental grasses, so it should be fairly easily maintainable. Then we've got some flowering trees in there for some multi-season interest. Here's a few views of the updated play space. So, you can see you got a smaller side for the ages two to five, larger side for five to twelve. There's our Omni Spinner, the merry-go-round. Seems to be a pretty popular piece of equipment. There's our bucket seat swing. On the backside of that play structure, we've got a web crawler. Those are also pretty popular. And then just an overview of what we're looking at.
I just wanted to point out to the Village Board quickly that this is different than what you see in the packet, because we made change, they made changes. So if you're trying to understand why ours looks different, that's why.
Good point. Some of the major feedback that staff and the Park Board brought up, which Matt was kind of alluding to, is our desire to try to be using this, it's called poured-in-place surfacing, but it's that spongy, kind of rubbery type of stuff. I wouldn't use the word harder, because that kind of makes it sound, sound a little more dangerous, but it is based off the height of a fall and the size of the equipment and everything like that. But we have found it to be much, much more accessible for those with strollers, wheelchairs, mobility devices. And it's, people love it. I mean, and it's not, it doesn't have the weeds and the thistles and everything like the wood chips do, and it's not near as messy as, like, people are kind of getting away from those rubber chips as well. The problem with that is that does come at a significant cost increase. And so we'll be, we'll be looking at that and bringing that back as we go through your bidding process and everything like that. But that might be something that the Village Board will have to consider, if that's a premium, that we would kick in additional fees under our impact fees, which we would have, to make that a, you know, all solid one surface all the way across, so there are no lips, there's no, there's no ramp needed or anything like that. And then the kind of suggestion, I believe, was neutral colors, if I remember right, kind of a neutral color scheme. Play equipment can come in everything from bright pinks, purples, oranges, that you can pick out from the space station, to something a little more natural. And I think the feeling was being right in a neighborhood, and I like our one at J.C. Park might be a little bit more bold, but something in a neighborhood, a little more soft colors, that'll be cooler, as well as just kind of blend in a little more to the Veridian neighborhood. That cover most of the, then you covered like all the, kind of some of the amenities and everything like that, so.
Correct.
Yep.
Questions? Tim?
For that rubber surface, then, is the maintenance on that over the long haul cheaper than wood chips and other options there?
Nothing will be cheaper than wood chips.
Okay.
Yeah. It's like saying, what's better, a dirt road or an asphalt road? You know, asphalt will always be more expensive, long run, and everything like that, but it's always be a much nicer riding surface. So it's kind of, it's hard, because it is, it is definitely a superior product, but it does come at a higher cost.
But, so it needs maintenance, then, too, over time?
No, it's more or less your replacement cost, you know, after twenty years, you replace it. Versus right now, we put wood chips in about every two or three years. You know, we might want to do it more often, if, you know, it just comes down to budget and time for that, but.
But the cost difference is enough that it's still more expensive than wood chips every three years?
Yeah.
Anybody else, questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a quick comment, which is to thank you for the fast work that you did. The Park Board literally gave them this feedback last week, and so to see it changed this fast, I really appreciate that. I think it helps the Board see what it's looking at. And to your point, Tim, we spent a lot of time on the Park Board talking about the difference between the wood chips and the poured-in-place surfacing, and just decided that the accessibility factor was also a major component, that we wanted to encourage families and children of all abilities to feel like they're welcomed at the Oregon Parks. And, you know, looking ahead as we put in new parks, keeping that as a focus as well was one of those priorities as well.
Anybody else? Excuse me. Okay, this is a no-action item. Thanks for coming in, Matt, and Jeff, for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item eight, unfinished business, items for discussion or possible action. A six million, six hundred and sixty thousand. General obligation promissory note, series twenty twenty-four. A one, presentation of presale report from Village Financial Advisor, Ellers, who I believe will be on the phone. Dave will be on the phone shortly.
Yeah, we're trying to do this here. Martin almost had me dialing nine-one-one.
It's early for that.
This is Dave.
Hi, Dave, it's Candy with the Village of Oregon. So I have the Village Board here.
Okay. You ready for me to start?
Ready for us?
Yes.
Yes, they are ready, Dave.
All right. Thank you very much for being flexible and letting me call in tonight. I know that you're not completely set up for virtual, but I appreciate it. I have another item I'm trying to get to tonight, so I'm going to try to walk through my report that, that should be in your packet, and I'll try to refer to the page numbers that are on the actual form, and then let you know when to go to the next slide. So I'm looking at what's called the Presale Report, and if you've heard my spills before, you know that this is a document that we use to, basically to document some of the processes we've been through, which, you know, started last fall with, with the financial management plan, and, you know, this really is a continuation of that. And it really shows some of the planning that has gone into it, and demonstrates the financing plan that we put together for it. So I'm going to be on page one of the Presale Report. The proposed issue size going into the sale, if you approve to go forward, is six million, six hundred and sixty thousand of general obligation promissory notes. One thing that is new this year, that we didn't have the ability to do in the past, is we can use notes to go up to twenty years. We no longer need to use bonds, thanks to legislation signed by the governor in late March. And so we're able to get the village a little more flexibility. It used to be that you would have a whole bunch of different purposes that you would borrow for, and that money had to stay within those purposes, and could not actually be transferred over to one that maybe was short of funds. And so from that perspective, you have a lot of flexibility. And also, you know, if it's something where, you know, you have other projects, you're able to reallocate some of those proceeds as well. So it really is kind of a benefit, because we're able to, you know, we're able to go out twenty years. Banks can actually buy your bonds, or you can actually do a note with the bank that goes out twenty years if they're willing to. And so it's kind of a nice, a nice change of pace. So the purposes of this issue is really to fund your twenty twenty-four capital improvement projects. I have a bunch of items listed here that are being covered, but there's a detailed list in, on table one, about five pages back from this, that we'll go through when we get a little further through here. Under authority, the point that I'll, I'll show you is that we're going to have approximately forty-two million dollars of debt outstanding at the date of the closing of this. So, you know, you'll, you'll be at about forty-seven percent of your statutory debt limit, which is defined as the total market value of the village multiplied by five percent, and that gives you the number that you're able to borrow as a total, and you're at, you're a little less than a half of that. You have a little bit more than forty-eight million that you can still borrow. Your policy for internal purposes is seventy-five percent of the statutory amount, so we're well below that forty-seven percent. And when we get back to the table that shows you general obligation debt outstanding, you'll see that we, we maintain really somewhere close to that number throughout the ten years that you did the financial management plan for as well. As far as the term, you have a, or a note that's going to go out from twenty twenty-five repayment through twenty forty-four. But on March first of twenty thirty-four, if there's reasons that maybe the interest rates are quite a bit improved, maybe there's some windfall of money that you have the chance to maybe downsize how much debt you have, you can call these notes on March first of twenty thirty-four for any of the issues that mature in thirty-five through forty-four. So we'll have to look at those when we get out that far, and, and see if maybe it makes sense to refund those if the interest rates are still good at that time, you would obviously keep paying on that. Going on to page two, we're going to have a rating call with Moody's Investor Services. I believe it's on May second. Yes. And what we'll do is we'll sit down with staff and some of the Eller staff, and, and the analysts at Moody's will ask a bunch of questions about your economic development, your financial status, how you're looking going backwards, how you're looking going forwards as far as your financials, and make a determination of whether that double-A two rating is still satisfactory for the village. It's a very good rating. You know, I think probably if we're going to move up ever, it's probably going to be after you've grown so much that you're, you're more like the size of Fitchburg, and that's the type of entity that ends up getting into the double-A ones typically. Under method of sale, we're going to offer this as a competitive sale, which means that local, regional, and national underwriters will have the opportunity, and banks have the opportunity to bid on your bonds. And that, obviously, the more bidders we get, the better interest rate we get, and you've had some pretty good success in the past as far as your bidders. Going on to page three, just going to talk about parameters before, parameters. You have done this as a village probably the last three or four years, I'd say. What this does is, is the resolution that's before you, that Quarrel sent you, is really something that allows the Village Board to delegate the approval of the sale to staff. In this case, it's the Finance Director or the Village Administrator on the date of sale. Now, the sale is scheduled for a non-Village Board meeting date, and one of the reasons that that actually ends up being a positive is that there's a lot of meetings on Mondays and Tuesdays in the state of Wisconsin, and probably all over. And, and when we have a sale on a non-busy day, we sometimes are able to capture more bidders. And obviously, like I said before, more bidders means better rates and a better deal for the village. So we have a few things that the, the sale has to do. It has to stay under the six million, six hundred and sixty thousand, the maximum amount that the underwriter can bid on. This is a hundred and seven percent, which means they will have given us a premium. And a premium works to, one, pay off the underwriter discount, which is how the underwriter makes money, but also it allows us to put some money in a, basically what's called a debt service reserve, that will pay like at least up to about three years' worth of interest, depends on how big that premium is. We don't want it to get too big, because if we don't, if we get too much premium, and we can't pay off the interest over that three years, that's illegal in Wisconsin, so we can't accept more premium than is allowed. And so that's why we hold that maximum bid down, to make sure we don't do that. The minimum bid, really, what that means is that we would get our money, and the underwriter would make their fee, and so that's the minimum bid. And then we try to make sure that we don't get a wild card type of a bid, which typically doesn't happen. And so we put a cap on how high the interest rate can go. You know, right now, the, the way this is set up, you're, you're more in the three-and-a-half percent, and I would expect that to be closer to what we get. I don't expect that we'll see anything close to five percent, and I actually would be surprised if we see something around four percent. But we need to at least put a cap on what that, that bid is, and try not to have somebody bid crazy amounts for us. The one thing that we have put into the parameters is kind of an offshoot of the financial management plan, where we're trying to hit a certain levy amount as we try to increase to be able to pay for your, your fairly significant capital improvement plan over the next few years. And so we're going up to three-point-seven million, approximately three-point-seven million for the twenty twenty-five levy. And last year's financial management plan, we were actually showing you three-point-eight million. actually showing you three point eight million. You did have some revenues that kept the the tax levy down. And so we were able to shave a little bit off of that. And then the parameters allow us to kind of move some maturities around in the later years so that we can kind of keep keep the structure that we have in the in the report so that keeps some flexibility in the future to do your other borrowings. So basically, the parameters is a way for us to sell on a day that is not a village board meeting, get some more bidders potentially, and allow the staff to approve the sale as as opposed to the village board approving it on board night. Going on to page four, really, the investment of the no proceeds proceeds, I believe, the village is going to handle those this year. But you do have the opportunity of using Ellers if that's necessary. But villages chose to do that on its own. As far as the service providers, your bond council is Quarles and Brady. You're paying each and his bond trust services, which really is it's kind of an insurance policy to make sure you make your debt payments on time. And if for some reason the bid comes in with what's called term bonds, it allows you to not miss certain notifications to the bondholders. And and sometimes that can be a little tricky and can affect your your rating because there might be blemishes on your your record out on something called Emma, which reports things like that. And Moody's Investor Services is your rating agency. Going on to page five, we have the calendar events. Tonight, you're we're reviewing the pre-sale report with you, and you're potentially adopting the parameters resolution to allow staff to approve the sale of the notes. We'll have a call with the village staff on the same day as we have the rating report. And we'll do that call with with staff to go over the official statement, which is the document that gets sent to the bidders to evaluate whether they want to bid on your your bond or your notes or whether, you know, it's something that affects how they bid on your notes. The actual official statement will go out to them on on May 9th. On May 16th is sale day. So if you approve the parameters resolution, the person that's designated to approve it will happen on May 16. And then the village will get the money to pay for its projects on June 6. I have a couple of schedules I'll go through real quick, starting with table one, which is just a page over. That's your detailed list of of projects. We can we can answer any questions you want on those. I think you've seen those before, and I think staff's been through those as well. But that project number of six million, five fifty three flows on to the next schedule, which we call our sizing schedule. It's also called the sources and uses schedule. It shows really the categories of projects and equipment we're going to finance this year with these notes. They're broken up by categories that staff asked that the repayment schedules be set up for, and you'll see that in another page. So on top of the cost of the projects is the issuance costs. Those are estimates going into sale day. Those get tightened up a little bit, too, and and we're able to get some savings typically out of some of those. And then as far as interest earnings, we've calculated based on the spend down that Lisa provided, you know, how much money we can make in interest investing these bonds or these notes over the spend down period. And then because bond or notes and bonds actually have to be in five thousand dollar increments, the rounding gets us to that number. The next page is really where we solve for the tax levy. And if you look, so the blue section is really where we are at twelve thirty one of twenty three, and it shows your debt service levy going into into that twenty four year. And we've got projected out, you know, how much is existing debt payments below that. As far as the current new debt, you'll see there's one column that shows the total principal and interest. And then next to that, we have the debt service levy where it says total net debt service levy. It's in the orange part. And I'm aiming at that three million seven number that you see there. Because we have we have bond or notes that are five thousand dollar increments, it's not easy to hit things right on the nose. So that's why we've asked that the the resolution be approximately three point seven million as far as that year, and we'll aim at that on sale day as well. And you'll see that, you know, we're going up up about three hundred eighty five thousand. Really, when we did this for the financial management plan, we were around three hundred and seventy five thousand. So really, when if if I were to show you the next nine years, you'll see that I'm right around that number going forward for the next nine years as well. So we're we're still sticking to what you had in your plan at that point. Going on to the next page, these are the breakouts of the repayments by those categories that staff asked that we break those out by. And the last page of that, which is three of three, will show you the total payments, which should tie into that orange column that I talked about on the on the tax impact page. And then the last scheduled tale, table five, is the debt capacity schedule. This actually has not only the current issue, but the next nine years based on the financial management plan in there, just to show you that, you know, we have a seventy five percent policy, and we're going to be landing somewhere around forty four percent, forty seven, that's forty four percent in here. And so you can see, we don't, we jump up about to fifty six percent in twenty seven, but then we're still hovering, you know, a little bit below that, well below your policy. So as far as the graph below, the purple line with the percentages is following that that axis of the on the right side that has percentages, the orange, and let's call it turquoise lines, as well as the green and blue area graphs are utilizing the left side, which is dollars. You can see you're well below your policy even on the chart as far as the graph goes. And the last page in the document is just how interest rates have been going. We're we're really just kind of hanging out, not too far off from where we were a year ago, maybe a little lower than that. And then two years ago, we're we're right about that same spot where where you sold back then as well. So we're kind of in the same interest environment that we have been in the last two years. It it goes up and down, but we're we're kind of hanging in there. And and there's been talk about rates maybe coming down this year. But as you've seen with the Fed, they they haven't cut anything yet. So I kind of feel like things will stay a little bit stable for a while until we hit the election for the presidential election. And then then we have no idea what's going to happen. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that was quite a bit.
Okay, questions for Dave? Seeing none? Let's uh, let's address the resolution then. Resolution number twenty four dash oh nine authorizing issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed six million, six hundred and sixty thousand general obligation promissory notes series twenty twenty four A staff recommendation motion to approve. Amanda and Tim, discussion? Hearing on all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Okay, AP downtown master plan agreement with redevelopment resources LLC in amount of fifty thousand, two hundred and forty dollars plus allowable expenses. And we have a couple of representatives from redevelopment resources here if they want to. Someone going to present on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. You're welcome to come up, please.
Hi, I'm Dana Sarver from redevelopment resources, and this is my colleague Ashley.
Great.
Hello. I'm with Studio GWA. We are subconsultants to redevelopment resources on the project. And we had the pleasure of meeting with the selection team about a month or so ago and had a good discussion about the the needs and desires for downtown and are looking forward to working with you all on some planning.
Take my mic.
Oh, is that better?
You can move it up toward you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Yeah, looking forward to working with you all as your downtown and your community is growing and there's some new needs and and new plans.
Yeah, I can say just a couple of things and just rehash my memo in the packet a little bit. So of course, we went out for a request for proposal for downtown master planning services earlier this year. We received seven proposals, all very well qualified firms. As mentioned, we had a selection committee of staff, President Ben Campen and Vice Chair of the Plan Commission John Bano. We interviewed four of them, and we all came to consensus about redevelopment resources as being a recommendation for moving forward with them. You know, had a couple of reasons, variety of reasons why we came to that consensus. Good price in terms of kind of in the middle of what we got from the proposals. We really liked the enthusiasm and the team that came and met with us in the interview. Felt that they really had a good understanding of of Oregon and spent some time in the community and researching the community before submitting their proposal and had a really good understanding and captured really, I think, what we're trying to to look for in this project. So we have a proposal in there, a contract for services in the in the packet for potential approval tonight. And of course, they're here if you have any questions for them or if you have any questions for staff.
Okay, let's get a motion. First, Jason and Carleen. Okay, questions? Comments?
I have a question for the amount in the in the spreadsheet on the in the packet. It's five thousand, fifty thousand, three eighty one. And here on the motion, it's fifty thousand, two hundred and forty on the agenda. So I just don't want to short us if we need the...
Yeah, we so we so their proposal was slightly, I think, less than what we ended up in the agreement because we just changed a couple of things.
Okay.
And then when we were negotiating with them on some of the piece of the scope. So it just changed just slightly a little bit.
Tom?
Could you just elaborate a little bit on the relationship between GW, GW, Studio GWA and how your relationship works? I noticed in some projects, one's been the lead and sometimes it's the other. So.
Sure. I can start. And Dana, feel free to jump in. I think we've worked together over the last three years, three plus years on a variety of projects. And I would say that's probably about five projects altogether. And usually when the proposal is more design focused, urban design focused or architectural related, Studio GWA might lead that project. And then often, these proposals for downtowns are maybe a little bit more economic or market based, in which case redevelopment resources tends to lead those projects. Anything else you would add?
I would say, like, I came from the public sector side, and Studio GWA had I had a relationship with them through a colleague there. And so we just kept wanting to work together. So that's that's kind of the story. We just really enjoy and appreciate each other's work.
Can I just ask about your process for going about getting community input on what they want to see and sort of sorting from, you know, sometimes there are loud voices. There aren't necessarily consensus by any means, but kind of what what's your process to sort of sort through some of the confusion that may come, knowing there's a couple of hot button issues here around the former village hall, the fire station and such? How do you plan to navigate that?
Okay, so, yeah, being from the public sector side, too, I understand those hot button issues and Ashley and her team have dealt with. They're from Rockford. So there's lots of hot button issues there, too. Actually, we're doing another project there, too. With the loud voices, you give them a chance to voice that, but then you have to also say, okay, this is where that loud voice is coming from. But we also need to encourage this group that tends to be more quiet. So we might have to go and go to the senior center or go to a a non-hot button place like a coffee shop or bookstore and meet there where they may feel more comfortable sharing their more positive perspectives.
And I think a lot of times, too, it's looking at options. You know, here are three different scenarios that might be presented. And we bring forth usually a visual representation of what that might be and ask for preference. Also for design preference, there's lots of, you know, visuals you can present to say what design style do you think matches the context of of where we're talking about. So that's another way visually to get kind of priority of one, two, three, and that helps get through some of the other issues that might be behind it. And I think it's just having a variety of different contexts. So like Dana mentioned, maybe we go to an event where something's already happening. Or maybe we do an open house style where people are going from board to board and we're having more individual conversations rather than, say, an open forum. And I think that benefits both sides because we both, you know, ourselves and then the public in that we're able to have more in-depth conversations with individuals throughout the process. And sometimes we'll do one-on-one interviews if that might be more appropriate to just kind of take it offline and really hear people through.
Just add one thing to that. One of the first tasks that we'll have to do is actually put together that community engagement plan. So as part of their proposal, they've identified 24 hours of community engagement. And so one of the first things that will come to the board and one of the first things we'll discuss with them is what is that plan exactly? How are we using those 24 hours? So that will be a conversation that you'll be able to have some input on and have the final say on for what that plan looks like.
Lynn?
Um, this is less a question and maybe just a comment or an idea for you. One of the things that I felt I wanted to see more of in your proposal was the sustainability aspect. Oregon just passed, the village board approved a sustainability plan last summer that has quite a few goals that I think could marry quite well into this plan. We can get you a copy of that plan if that's helpful. But seeing if there's some ways that we could partner with the sustainability committee from the outset to sort of think about some unique planning structures that we could put into place that allow us to, you know, achieve some of those goals and keep that sustainability lens, just a thought.
Absolutely. I think that's it'll be a great folk stakeholders to include in the in the conversation to understand what those goals are. We'll read the plan before we, you know, kick that off. But there, yeah, there very well might be opportunities for either shared geothermal wells or, you know, looking at some different types of construction, too, and how to encourage that to encourage sustainability and offsetting the carbon footprint.
Thank you.
Amanda?
Also, that's a good idea, Lynn. And I'm also, as Chair of the Transportation Committee, we don't, we're looking at bringing transportation in, and we don't know exactly what it's going to look like yet. But just keeping an eye on, you know, connections downtown because it is a central kind of hub. Just keep that in mind as you're planning and all that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion of second. So all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see. It's a development agreement with Main Street Townhomes, Oregon LLC, related to the construction of 24 unit affordable housing development located at 249, 267 North Main Street. Staff recommendation, recommendation motion approved. I think this is just one of many documents that we're approving and as part of this process. Go ahead.
Jeff, yeah, you got that. There was just a couple minor changes to the agreement that was in your packet. So I think on, yeah, just scroll down, you'll find the the red line, I think.
You know what section it's under?
It should be. Eventually. There. So this section here was related to building permits. Actually, do you want to talk about, Derek? You were the one that actually did this. So when we provided this development agreement to the developer for feedback, one of the things that they came back with is that, I wish that it would have preserved the original text here, but...
Do you want me to go to the other?
Oh, there we go. Actually, Jeff, if you go back in the notes section, it will show the...
Got it.
Okay. There we go. So the original text...
So the original text.
Okay, just trying to make a big, okay.
This relates more to our typical development agreements that we see in like planted subdivisions, right? And so typically in those situations, we require the developer to do all the public improvements, the water, sewer, sidewalks, curb and gutter, et cetera, before they're allowed to get a building permit for any of the lots in the plat. That language was preserved in this development agreement, but and it would have probably worked just fine in this case. But here, the developer actually reached out and said, actually, for our purposes, we may need to get building permits in advance of of closing in order to show our lenders, hey, we've got the permits, we've got all of our project fully entitled. And so in order for them to close with their own lender to get the money to do the public improvements, they need those building permits. So it's a little bit of a chicken and egg situation. Given their investment in this project thus far, I don't really see any issue with allowing them to pull those permits to pulling this requirement out. And so we've we've removed that section here. And then there was one others. Under insurance.
Did I miss something?
Right there.
Umbrella.
So and again, for larger planted subdivisions, we require the developer to have a larger umbrella liability policy which covers incidents that may occur above and beyond the normal commercial general liability. And so typically we require five million dollar policy limits for each occurrence and five million dollars aggregate. I think the developers point here as well, our lenders and our stakeholders that are involved on our side only require us to have one million dollars. We prefer not to have to go above that if possible. And so given again, the relative low risk of this this project, we reduce those from five million to one million dollars. So those are the only changes made here.
All right, thank you. Looking for a motion on this side of Jason and Tom.
That's a motion as amended, right?
Yes, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing that, oh, Tim, sorry.
I just had, I just had one question. I feel like in the earlier conversations about this, we've described this as a twenty-four unit affordable and accessible housing development. And now what it says is affordable? Have we?
I don't know that it was ever.
Was that never there?
I don't think that was ever in this project. This one is twenty-four units affordable, they're all three bedrooms, so they're designed for families in mind.
Two-story.
Yep, two-story. And then the other component of this project is they're going to provide some kind of social services to the families that are in this project. But I don't believe accessible was ever a part of it.
So it wasn't really aimed at senior, I was, I must have been mistaken.
Yeah, it was always for families.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor with with, as Amanda pointed out, with the change, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Thank you all. Item eight D, review bids for North Stanpipe Rehabilitation Project. Potential action to accept the base bid and awarding contract to George. Anyone, anyone?
Contupus.
George, thank you, George Contupus Painting Company. I could spell it. In the amount of three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, staff recommendation motion to approve as presented. Amanda and Tim. Lauren, do you have anything to add on this one?
Nope, this is pretty well covered in the memo. The one thing to consider here that isn't in the memo is that we got word that part of the reason we got such good bids is that George Contupus Painting Company did have an opening earlier in their schedule. So fortunately for us, that means we're likely looking at more of a May timeframe to have the standpipe down versus a summer, which really, really helps us out. We may still be evaluating, asking residents to be cognizant of how much water they are using. Anytime we take a major structure like this down, we do want folks to be aware of it. But this is a much better scenario than trying to take down one of our storage facilities in July. So we're we're quite excited to move forward with that schedule.
Thank you, Lauren. Tom.
Also note it was a hundred and eight thousand dollars out over the, under the projected.
Yes.
All right. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we have a motion second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you, Lauren. Uh, let's see, eight E, proposed job grade description for utility accounting position assistant position. Classification of position at grade seven on the employee compensation weight plan weight scale and placement of position on the organizational chart. We had a good memo, outletting justification and a financing on this. Let's get a motion on the table, please, Tim and Amanda. And something to add, Martin?
Sure, I can. So we brought this position to the board a couple of meetings ago. So it's a position where the cost will be split between the water and sewer utilities, which is helpful for being able to fill it when we're being, when we're asking to fill it, just because of the nature of those two funding streams for those utilities. Go over everything I went in the in the packet here, but I'm happy to answer any questions. We did get the, we did decide for the position to be thirty-six hours per week, so just slightly under full time. And then, yeah, I'm happy to, happy to answer anything I can.
Lynn.
So what, it sounds like the funding coming from these two utilities feels fairly secured. However, if we're just playing out worst case scenario, what would occur if these utilities can no longer sustain this salary? What is the contingency? Does that then fall to our budget? Does it come back? I mean, I'm guessing it comes back to the board for evaluation. What would that look like?
I guess it'd depend on the severity of the financial issue. It would have to be pretty severe in the next couple of years for that to happen. But let's say we had a budget crunch in one of the water sewer utilities. On the sewer side, the flexibility with that one is you can put in a rate increase anytime you want. At any time of the year. So like on the, like on the government side, the property tax side, you can only go out and get your property tax once a year. And after that, that's it. So that makes things very difficult on that side, at least even just from timing. So on the sewer side, things are bad, put a rate increase in place or cut. You know, if there's something that's happening that we can eliminate to help us financially, that's that's an option. Water side is a little bit different, but somewhat similar. The only difference would be we have to go through the Public Service Commission to get our rates increased. That can take time. So if there's a, you know, significant budget crunch there, you know, we're looking at trying to find ways to reduce until we can get rates into place. Now again, that would be, you know, these these two things operate so much differently than how the government side does. Just from a level, as I talked about in the memo, from a rate of return being built into the structure. But then also just the ongoing sort of income that keeps coming in because we get income every month, right, from customer rates. So and then, of course, for the utilities for us, for Oregon, right now, we're, of course, sitting on a bunch of cash because we have a lot of projects that we want to do. Some of those projects are going to happen later this year, some of them are going to happen over the next couple of years. So if there's some budget crunch stuff happening in the immediate future, can use some of that cash to do, to to cover that and then sort of anticipate some rate increases or some changes to to make that up in over the next couple of years.
Thank you.
Carly.
I just really appreciate the the reasons, and in particular, the succession planning, having transitioned in a lot of different scenarios, understanding that the learning curve on these kinds of things can be very steep and getting somebody in before their retirement so that they understand what's going on is, I think, really smart. And I also appreciate that the salary scale actually, you know, provides a structure for bringing somebody in at a compensation rate that makes sense for the job that they're being asked to do and also provides opportunities for advancement. So those two things in particular, I'm particularly pleased about when it comes to this.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we have a motion second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you. Item nine, new business items for discussion, possible action. A review police department staffing and wages information, including request to fill lieutenant position, address, pay compression. Do you want to speak to this?
Sure, I didn't know if you wanted me to go first or Martin, because his memo was first, whichever.
Go for it.
Go ahead, Chief.
So I want to bring this memo to the village board for a couple of different reasons. The first is to give you a status update on the two officer minimum we've been working really hard to get to. And there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes for recruitment. So if the board ever wants me to come back with an update on that, I'd be more than happy to do so. We've been keeping a kind of a tally of the different approaches we're making right now to get the best qualified candidates. Just recently, and it's in my memo, Sergeant Hatfield, he's our second shift patrol sergeant, he resigned. He took a promotion with Verona Police Department. So of course, this will set us back. We we hope to promote internally, we have some really excellent candidates. So that unfortunately though, then creates kind of a ripple effect and extends our projected date to finally get to that two officer minimum to at a minimum of March of twenty twenty-five. So I just want to give you that update. And then to move into the rest of the memo, there's a lot there to unpack. So I just took, wrote down some additional notes to kind of summarize it. In May of twenty-three, the village board approved my request to restructure the department to having two detectives and a second lieutenant. Could you bring up the structure, please?
Yeah, yeah.
It's, yeah, it's at the end of my memo.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Sorry about that.
There you go.
You can see the structure up here as I talk. So just back up here, in May of twenty-three, the village board approved my request to restructure the department to having two detectives and that second lieutenant. So if you look on the screen there, you'll see the green second lieutenant vacant and then those two detectives are below it and the SRO as well. The second lieutenant position was placed in the strategic plan for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. In the interim, I have reassigned tasks to various individuals, including myself, as noted in my memo packet. With that said, the most important in all of those duties listed are accountability, oversight and mentoring. Examples of that would be overseeing investigations, overseeing the school resource officer. Although we are currently getting by, this is not sustainable into the unforeseeable future. As things sit now, the second lieutenant vacancy, we are short a command level supervisor position. We are in great need of that second lieutenant to help have oversight of a young department. At this time, the average years of service for the police union staff is six point one years. Keeping in mind, eight of those police union staff are under four years of experience. Due to limited years of experience our officers have, and I want to emphasize though, they are doing a phenomenal job. They're just young, they're they're growing and they're growing into amazing officers for our community. But we need our sergeants out on the road. You'll see in that memo, the added duties of those sergeants are also carrying. But we need those sergeants on the road working alongside them to mentor, coach and lead. The two patrol sergeants that we currently have are predominantly in the office working on those added duties. It's unfortunate because in looking at their years of service, it averages out to about twenty-three and a half years of experience. That's off the road working with them. Their time now is being sent again on those tasks listed in my memo, taking time away that could be allocated towards the task in their job descriptions, which I've attached as well. Yeah, as I was going through this, I know this is not easy. I read Martin's memo as well. This is an immense challenge for the village board. But it was interesting as as we were working through this, I was actually at another police department. I saw a quote on the wall. I'm big on quotes, you know, when they're inspirational. And this one was by Ralph Martenson, and it was, being positive in a negative situation is not naive, it is leadership. That is one of our core values. So I'm here to give you the facts, I'm here to tell you what we need. And I hope by bringing this, this, my concerns to you, again, I do not think this is sustainable. I am concerned as a chief, this is a lot of work on shoulders that have to make fast decisions and have a lot of accountability. I'm hoping that after tonight, I can give some sort of information back to my staff and myself, to be honest, that there's an end in sight. So that's all I have, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding my memo.
Martin, why don't you go ahead first?
So I'll just cover this from purely a cost standpoint. Of course, my memo was in the packet, and if you had a chance to read that, I'm happy to answer any questions on it. So it's interesting on this agenda, I was just thinking about, we have kind of our three different different buckets of of financial management on this agenda. So debt, utilities, we just talked about the last item, and now we're talking about government services. So when we talk about, you know, debt and utilities, things are really a lot more flexible in those two worlds. Debt is a lot more flexible because we can basically raise property taxes to cover debt service payments up to the statutory limit as Dave indicated on the call. And so obviously that we're at, sitting at, you know, forty-four, forty-seven percent of our debt limit. You know, that's another, you know, forty-eight million dollars you can borrow. So for all intents and purposes, the only thing that's standing in your way is really political willpower. Same thing with utilities. Again, it's one, a lot more flexible from a from a funding standpoint. But also the only real limitation there is is political willpower again. Well, you know, what is the policy of the board and does it want to, is it reasonable enough for the Public Service Commission? And for other statutory reasons to meet. So but then when we get to the government services side, things will look much, much, much different. And as we've talked about, if you pan through a few budgets here, you know, you know, sort of the limitations that are on property taxes. So of course, property taxes fund, you know, something like sixty to seventy percent of our government services operations. So that's pretty much everything we do except for utilities. Everything, including employee wages, benefits, keeping the lights on, keeping the doors open. Utility, you know, utility costs, everything that we do. And so everything else beyond that, the other forty percent, so twenty percent is shared revenues, which is intergovernmental aids from the state, can't really control that, that's pretty much the same year to year. And then the other ten to twenty percent is just sort of smattering of a whole bunch of stuff. Permits, permit fees, license fees. Things that are sort of either set by state law or there's for a specific service. You know, some like our aides for senior center, stuff that, the county reimbursement for the library, you know, things that are very either specifically tied to something or just, you know, a variety of smaller tiny things that are not necessarily reliable or can fluctuate from year to year. And so when we're relying on, you know, sixty, seventy percent of our revenue to fund this, the property taxes, we are incredibly limited from how many, how much we can raise property taxes for operational costs from year to year. And so I had a little table in my memo there. Last year for this budget, we were able to add a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to to property taxes. The way that we arrive at that is based on a formula for new construction value in the community. So all the new construction that happens the prior year has a value and then that's divided into our existing equalized value. And for the Village of Oregon, that typically is about anywhere from one and a half to three percent that we can increase property taxes from year to year. So that ends up looking like usually anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and sixty-five thousand was one of the higher ones that we've had in recent years. So it's all dependent on. So it's all dependent on new construction value, so things that are being newly built. So appreciation of existing value does not count. That's, that doesn't count to be, to add to to the value of your property taxes that you can levy. So you actually have to be growing in new construction value. And of course, that can vary from year to year, but generally for Oregon, we're pretty consistent. So we can can rely on that, around that a hundred and fifty thousand from year to year. So if we're looking at filling this position on an ongoing basis, it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, at least to start with. If we're looking at twenty twenty-five, of course, if we're estimating about a hundred and fifty thousand, you know, maybe we we have, we're right there. Maybe we have enough to cover that. But that is the only amount that you have for your entire operation. So that's everything else. And so the ability for the village to do a small increase to employee salaries. I think I had it calculated about ninety thousand is one step on the scale for every employee. Union employee, the police union, their wages are estimated to go up about forty-five thousand based on their union contract. So those two together, just doing, you know, basic employee wage increases for the annual budget. We're already at about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And so then when we talk about inflation from year to year, and we talk about utility costs, of course, the Village of Oregon has to pay our own utility costs. And our utilities are going up. Align Energy, of course, those costs, fuel costs for our vehicles, our insurance costs, whether employee insurance or the village's liability and property insurance. Those things have been going up recently. And they typically go up at least a little bit from year to year. Some other things too, whether it's, you know, materials, supplies. Of course, with inflation, where it's been, it's a little bit better now, but we can certainly expect to try to have to accommodate some some additional cost. So as I said in my memo, you know, if we fill the position now, we're looking at, you know, most likely a two hundred thousand dollar deficit heading into the twenty twenty-five budget. And that's before doing anything else. And so I lined out, you know, a number of options for consideration in terms of how you can balance that. It could start from elimination of of services, reduction of service quality. So it's things like mowing less or plowing less, reducing service availability, closing the library a day, closing the senior center a day, closing village hall, assuming greater risk, things like, we do things that we try to mitigate mitigate risks, so having Derek here, attorney available, allowing staff to use attorneys reasonably, using financial advisors, our own insurance program quality, you know, those are things that we can reduce quality to save money. Of course, you're assuming greater risk when you do those things. You can eliminate staff positions or reduce staff hours. Of course, that goes hand in hand with with service quality. We can assume no, or we can assume and and say, no wage increases for employees. We can change benefit programs, either eliminate, modify, change quality. Another option is, in terms of risk, is budget, assuming greater risk within our budget. So two specific areas would be investment income. So for, you know, after two thousand eight to about two thousand twenty-one, we barely made anything in investment income because interest rates were basically zero. And then now in the last year and a half, two years, you know, in twenty twenty-three, we made over two hundred thousand. We're relying on eighty thousand dollars in in investment income to fund our operations this year. So, you know, there's an area where we could say, well, we're going to assume that interest rates are going to stay high, and we're going to rely on this to fund our ongoing costs. Those funds need to be there every year, so we're assuming that those interest rates need to remain elevated or we're going to find somewhere else to to offset that cash in a future year. The other way, the other place that we're relatively conservative on in our budgeting is assuming that all of our positions will be full all year. So we budget all of our positions, all salaries, benefits for the full calendar year. And of course, we have, sometimes we have resignations, so we may have some gaps in in the amount of money that we're paying out in salary and benefits, and so we may, we end up with savings there. I'll say that outside of the police department and the library, you know, over the last couple of years, although I'd say it's stabilized there for part-time positions recently, we don't have a lot of turnover for the village. So I would say, for the most part, we do have most of our positions full for for most of the years. But we could assume that maybe some of these positions will be open for a few months out of the year. The other option would be, and we've talked about this at the board over the last couple of years, is increase revenue. So two years ago, the board pulled on two low hanging fruit with the wheel tax and streetlight fee. Those were kind of the last two that were sort of easy to do, at least administratively, not necessarily politically, but so we we did those. There's other options that we can do, but those, the the other options involve a little bit more complexity in terms of, you know, if we're talking things like that are common, like stormwater utilities. You know, you're setting up a utility, now you're setting up rate structures, you're setting up billing, you're setting up customers, you're setting up a scheme basically to to charge those. So these other options that I have listed are a lot more resource intensive in terms of developing time and expertise and getting in place. And then on the back end, the state legislature has closed a lot of those savings loopholes. So if you create a stormwater utility, there is actually a max that you can actually save and take off the tax roll. The other option is referendum, so you can permanently increase your the amount of property taxes you bring in for operating. If you go out to referendums, similar to school districts, you use those commonly. There was one here in Oregon a couple of years ago. Basically, you'd be asking the residents to increase the taxes for something specific. And that that increase, at least for operating, would be on an ongoing basis, or at least permanent. I guess I'll stop, stop there for now, if there's any questions.
Okay. For my clarification, are we, are we dealing with two different issues here tonight? One, we have the lieutenant position, but are we also looking to address the pay compensation as well?
Yeah, so I mentioned that in the memo, just to put it on the board's radar. That will be coming, and the compression will get tighter as we move forward. And the numbers speak for themselves, so I really didn't add much to that.
Thanks for the clarification. Okay. Jason and Karleen next.
So I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, and this is the proverbial rock and hard place, if you ask me. Because it is extremely important to me, and I think our residents, to invest in public safety for the good of the community. It's important to support the chief and the other police officers to make sure they do an effective job. And I'd like to comment, compliment the chief and the force. They do fantastic work. And and that is very important. It's in terms of looking at it from the police side, someday, say, the idea that it will be out there someday, this position is untenable. I see that. And so I would like to see us come up with a plan. If it's not immediate, it's sooner than later. That being said, while we are very diligent about making sure taxes are affordable, the residents of the village, I believe, expect a high level of public service. Mowing, we know. Don't cut a field, and you'll hear about it the next day. Plowing, employee compensation is an important equity issue for me, and so unfortunately, our current levy limits seem to pit department against department or can have that ability. And I I'm frustrated by that, but the reality is, I don't think this is an expense issue. I think it's a revenue issue. And we, even before I was elected to the board, I knew a referendum was coming down the road. No matter when we decide as a board, and I'm interested in hearing other people's thoughts, about when we empower the chief to hire that second lieutenant, I think it's extremely important that that we let the residents decide the level of service they're willing to pay for. And I believe, even though it'd be a lot of work and a tough sell, we have very reasonable residents who are interested in supporting the police force and want a high level of service. And therefore, I think we should also begin planning on a referendum.
Karleen.
I'm going to concur with everything that Jason said. I look at this list of ways that we could cut expenses, and none of them are tenable. I I really feel, as as he stated, that the services that we provide are not over the top. They are what village residents should expect. And to, I I I don't think that we should be charging for snow plowing and et cetera. And I I do believe that the residents of the village want those things too. And I, I think, given the right messaging and information, education about what a referendum would cover and what would happen if it didn't pass, I think the residents of the village are very reasonable people. I think public safety is a top priority for everyone as well as maintaining and even expanding some of the services that we have. So I I'm just going to completely concur with what Jason said and think that we should be preparing ourselves for referendum. And I, I don't know, is August too soon, or is?
Yes.
Yes? Yeah. Okay. Can I ask a question?
Please.
So right now, I mean, you need to be able to hire. How soon, if we were to say this is, how soon could that process happen? If we determine that we do want to move forward with possible referendum and not cutting services?
I think, I think the earliest that you're going to be able to do a referendum would probably be next spring.
Yeah, but you got to
Right.
not hire a lieutenant till next spring? And that, the
I mean, that's, that's a choice that you
Are they linked that way?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do they have to be linked that way?
Not necessarily, no.
I think there's two different questions at hand. One is referendum discussion, which I think, I think we definitely need to have later. But I think what you're saying is, what is the practical date that this lieutenant would start?
Correct. What's the practical date that the chief could begin to advertise and hire somebody? What's practical?
So if if we had the funding and the village board said, here you go, my next step would be to meet with the police commission, come up with a game plan, but we could spin it around in three months approximately. If not sooner, but we definitely want to, would, we would want to have the right approach to the job announcement to really pull in those great candidates.
Okay, thank you.
Tim.
Couple of thoughts. First, on the new construction value, when is that number calculated? Is it when the building permits issued, when the place is occupied, or what's the timing?
I believe it's done in the annual assessment process. So the assessors go through and
But if a house is like in the process of being built?
Oh, I see, like a half year?
Right.
Yeah, so the the assessments are of January one. So whatever the value, whatever the current state of everything is on January one, that is the value of the property that's going to be. Whatever that value is, that's what's going to be taxed that year. And so if you're halfway done with your house, it'll be a half, it's a fifty percent value. And then the rest will get put on the next year.
Okay. And then to the, specifically to the lieutenant position, I think the biggest concern I had in reading through the packet was just that it looks like a support services superintendent is doing work that ideally would be assigned to a sworn police officer. Is that a fair statement?
Ideally would be assigned to that lieutenant. And what happens is, is when she hits certain points of that work, she stops and she'll come in and we'll talk, and she'll check with me, so like court paperwork, right? She's not as familiar with elements of a crime, and those have to be in a probable cause statement, because that person was physically arrested.
Right.
And their free will is taken away. So when she's ready to prepare the reports, she'll stop me and say, I need you to review these, or one of us, if I'm not available, to make sure everything's there before she does her court officer paperwork and sends it up.
Okay. But so that was my concern, is that that's work being asked for somebody to do that, that isn't ideal for the way that works. So I guess I support what Jason and Karleen have said of finding a way to approve this position. And I think if I read through Martin's memo accurately, there probably is funding in twenty twenty-four to pay for it. The problem is in twenty twenty-five, we've now established a new baseline, and we don't have a way to pay for that.
Correct, yep.
And so maybe that's the question we can answer at another meeting, is, is can we find a way to afford this in twenty twenty-five and beyond? But I'm not sure what we're trying to do tonight. Did we want to motion tonight or just the conversation?
Uh, we definitely want, well, no, we don't, don't, a motion is not required, but if if we want to take action, certainly, yes. Tom.
Okay. I was sort of expecting this conversation, but I thought it would happen when we got into the budget process this year. This is about three or four months before then, you know, I really, I'd hope we'd have a little breathing room here. It's, it's difficult. When you talk about cutting services, you're talking about cutting people's jobs. You're, you're going to, you can't cut services without eliminating the person if you're going to recover any benefit. You can't reduce your your budgets without, you know, you could say, well, I'm not going to mow that field, but then somebody has to be no longer there to mow it or plow the field or or plow the street or pick up whatever we're going to be doing. I guess I feel like we're out ahead of the curve here. And from a timing perspective, I think there's a really big issue on what is our revenue going to be next year? And where are we going to be positioned? I feel we're, we're almost too far early in the year for me to tell, to start guessing what twenty twenty-five is going to look like. I guess I'm, I'm just not really ready to to move forward until I get that kind of background.
I'm just going to interject, and Tim asked a good question, and and I, my answer was less than complete, and that is, we can take no action. We can take action or we can ask for more information. Just wanted to make sure everybody's clear on that. Looks like Lynn was handling that.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of jump off of Tom's comments, which is that we're, sorry.
Sorry. No, no, sorry.
Okay. I agree that by cutting, by cutting things, we're reducing jobs, but we're also currently working without a full staff. So this is not a, we want more, so we're going to reduce something else. It's that we're already working at a deficit in our police structure. And I, I, I look at it that way, which is that we've already reduced the service of what our village expects of public safety and our police officers expect of each other to have backup, to have that too. We've talked about that two officer minimum because that's real security, not only for our officers, but for our village, that there are multiple eyes looking at a situation. And I think that that cannot be overstated, that, you know, someday, something might happen, and the more eyes and experienced eyes we can have on a situation makes our lives a lot easier on those really bad situations. So I want it to not, I want to be careful not to have this conversation about, well, let's reduce something else. So I want it to not, I want to be careful not to have this conversation about, well, let's reduce something else because we're currently looking at a deficit. So moving on from that in a productive manner, as Chief mentioned in a positive voice. I think my suggestion or my opinion would be to instruct. Village staff, if we could look at a at a holistic idea of what are some tweaks or adjustments, I understand that. This is not like a tweak or adjustment of like, let's order three less pens, but like, what are some things that we can. Reasonably do in the process of having this discussion about a referendum. I'm not opposed to that, but. I I'll, I wanna keep us on mind that we are currently working without what we need and. I think that the police department deserves to have that attention and and I know it's a really tough thing. I totally get it, but. Um, I just think that I as a board member would like to see a bigger picture of what some numbers look like, what. What some reasonable adjustments could be that could get us through this year and then. You know, potentially part of next year, should a referendum not. Occur or be successful.
Okay, Amanda and then Jason.
I basically agree with everything I'm hearing, which is, which is great. Um, and also. You know, when we talk about uh what our assets are as a village, our most important important asset that we have is the people. Our employees, our people who are working for this village. It's not buildings. It's not any of the other stuff that we spend money on. It's it's the people. And when I came on this board. Employee compensation had not been raised for many years and for years and years, we had been balancing the budget on the backs of our employees. And I'm not willing to go back. I don't, I do not want to see a hiring freeze or like a, I mean, a wage freeze or anything like that. Because then we're just gonna be that many years behind in catching up someday and we don't have the revenue. Like it, that's, it's not like we're just suddenly gonna find something five years from now. This is going to be a continuing problem. We have reached the capacity of of what we can do to raise funds and to cut things. So I agree with what I'm hearing. Um, I'm at the point where I would like more information about what a referendum would look like. You know, what would it cover? Uh, you know, how much would it, how long would that last us into the future? How how, what, what does it look like? When would it happen? All those kinds of things. So that's sort of where I'm at and I agree too that um we've, we've gotta, we gotta staff our police department. That's where we see the biggest turnover uh and it's a constant struggle and it's not sustainable. So I think it's time to to just. Bite the bullet and do it and and get up to where we need to be.
Okay, I'm just going to uh. Eliminate a little bit of the conversation about a referendum and and the reason why is, first of all, we're not gonna act on that tonight or anytime soon. And this is turning into a little bit of that conversation and it's really not on the agenda. So I'd like to narrow it down to the discussion of the lieutenant position at hand. Jason, you're next.
So with this lieutenant position, it sounds like we as a board uh will possibly need to take some risk here. For twenty twenty five, uh, trusting the process that we're uh that Phil just talked about. Because it's twen- not twenty twenty four where we have the issue, it's possibly in twenty twenty five. And so it's putting in the uh proper planning, it's. I'm not sure, maybe after I'm done sharing right here, I thi- I think we're about three months out from knowing. What our revenue will be for twenty twenty five on estimate. Is that correct?
Four months.
Four months? Okay. Um, so so what we're really looking at is is how are we planning to deal with twenty twenty five and. I'm I'm willing to bet that we can do the work that's necessary and that the public will come along to help us with this. Otherwise, I also trust the uh the um. Resourcefulness of um the this village board and the staff and some of the other. Options for increasing revenue um that Martin laid out as a backup plan. To to work through twenty twenty five, which is the issue.
Carly.
Just wanna make a comment that is not really related to any of these specific things, but. The revenue sharing system is broken. We know that. Um, and Martin provided us a memo that really spelled out. All the ways it's broken. Last year, we got a little bump. It was a stopgap. That system is still not fixed and I'm going to advocate for us as a board. To to advocate through the league municipalities and other entities that lobby on our behalf. We're gonna have a new legislature after November, perhaps more amenable to changing some things, so it doesn't look like. We're the ones who are broken and we get um a more equitable revenue back from the state, so. Just gotta throw that in.
Amanda.
I guess I I like a little more clarity from from Jason and you're, you know, talking about like the the lieutenant uh. Position. Are are you saying that you think we should approve something and then figure out how to pay for it? But, you know, we're on that track. Is that kind of where you were thinking?
Yes, and it kind of depends, that that is what I'm thinking. Part of it depends on um. What we we have, we all, and we can't talk about it now because it's not on the agenda, but have several. Avenues in mind that we can can go with. And so then it's a matter of the level of risk. So the question is, is um if we have the money in this year's budget. And and this is a question I'll have from Martin in a second, but if we have the money in this year's budget to pay for a half year. Well, what if we instead of a half a year um pushed it out three months and did a quarter of a year, which would put. Put an end date in sight and be able to say, okay, I I see the horizon, but then would possibly put, give us more of a surplus moving into. Twenty twenty five to mitigate the risk. Um, and and that's my question for Martin. Martin, if we end up with a budget surplus, can we carry that over into the next, next budget cycle?
Yeah. And it, I mean, there's a couple of things, so. Yes, if we have a budget surplus, we can carry that over and we can use that. Obviously, that's. Now just one time cash, there's no guarantee that that's gonna be there again. The other thing I'll say to that too is depending on the size of of the surplus, uh, it could be a little problematic because. We have a fund balance target, so we we can keep a minimum, like a rainy day fund, a minimum balance in our in our general fund and that's. Uh, just to make sure that we have cash liquidity, um, or if there's a major catastrophe, we have money we can pull out of the bank immediately and start spending it. With expenses, now that target is tied to a a percentage of expenses between twenty five percent and thirty five percent. Now, if expenses are going up in the budget, that target moves with it. And so if the surplus. And that that's what will happen this year and we have the audit, audit presentation in May. You know, twenty twenty three kicked out about a four hundred thousand dollar surplus and that was because of vacancies in the police department and investment income. And so, but about a hundred thousand of that needs to go back into the general fund to make sure that our target, our rainy day target keeps going up to match our budget. Because our budget keeps going up. Uh, so if you end up with a hundred thousand dollar surplus next year, end of twenty twenty five or twenty twenty four this year. We may need all of that to fund our our rainy day target. So. Something to keep in mind now. That rainy day target is a policy choice. Wouldn't recommend going much lower than what we have currently, but. Those are some things to consider.
Okay, Amanda and then Lynn.
Thank you for that explanation. Um. So the only problem I have is. You know, we can have all kinds of different avenues to raise money and, you know, whether whether it's referendum or something else, but. None of that is is guaranteed. And I really, I don't want to put our uh chief in in the position of hiring somebody. And then having to let them go because we don't have the funds to maintain their position. So. I'm I'm a, I'm a little bit hesitant to just go ahead and try this and hope we find the money. If, I mean, if the earliest we could do a referendum, for example, um, would be spring of next year, I mean, again, there's no guarantee that it would pass. We hope it would, but I just feel like it might, I I want to hire someone badly. I I I see. That you're struggling, like this is an issue, but at the same time, that would almost be worse, I would think, to hire someone and then have to let them go. So I'm. I'm I'm not quite ready to make that leap, but if someone's has another idea, I'm open to it.
Good.
Okay, I'm gonna ask some silly questions. Martin? Four hundred dollars out of the twenty twenty three, four hundred, four hundred, four hundred thousand dollars out of the twenty twenty three budget. Hundred of thousand of that's going to the rainy day fund. You mentioned that the reason we have that surplus is because of vacancies in the police department. How much of that four hundred thousand, maybe I'm getting him ahead of myself because it sounds like we're getting a presentation in May. How many, how much of that do you reasonably feel like we could utilize?
So. I'm guessing that most of that has already been used because we are using a lot of cash for those capital projects.
Got it.
That we talked about um over the last couple of, that's how we reduced. I think, what did we have initially for capital projects, something like, yeah, something eight, nine million dollars and we reduced that by about two million because. We have this cash available for a variety of different reasons, including stuff that's left over from the budget, so. We use that to reduce the borrowing and then we don't have borrowing costs moving forward, so.
Okay.
I mean, we'll know for certain, um, once we get the audit back, how much is sort of free and not intended for any purpose yet. But I don't expect it would be that four hundred thousand. It might be considerably less.
Okay, and then I just have another question, sorry. Chief, I'm wondering your opinion, I, our reaction to Jason's proposal of. Essentially cutting in the middle the current need, so targeting it for a Q three. Start, so that gives you an end date. We're not pushing it down the road. Be honest with us, how does that feel as far as? Is that a reasonable thing for us to even consider or would you rather we either do the thing or don't do the thing?
Yeah, first of all, thank you so much for having this difficult conversation. I know this is not easy, so thank you. Um, but an end in sight, I'll take it. And uh, I just, and looking at all the duties that people are carrying in addition. There's been give and take back and forth on their own duties, so. They may not be doing some of their own duties to try to cover these other things because they're that much more essential. So an end in sight would give us. Just an understanding of what the future looks like. I'm sorry, I wasn't talking to the microphone.
Tim and then Tom.
Okay, um, so I see this issue as really more symptomatic of a broader issue that the village is facing. And it's something I saw in business all the time, that as you reach certain thresholds in a business, you need to sort of reinvent and and re-engineer a lot of the ways you do things. You hit that fifty million dollar sales number as a company, you probably have to change the structure of your management team. You guys have more experience working with other villages, Derek and Martin. What have other people done, or maybe this is something we can go back to at another meeting. And kind of talk through, how have other villages sort of navigated these watershed moments where you have these generational costs, like a library and a senior center and such? And and been able to sort of navigate that and grow without.
Okay.
Given the constraints.
I think that's a good point, Tim, but I'm afraid again that we're gonna stray too far off of what's on the agenda. Start covering those. Those are good questions and I think we all know, want to know the answers, but.
I guess I'm looking, could that just be in the future agenda item?
And and I think that'd be a good time to add it, yeah. But again, I like to get back to the to the lieutenant's position that's at hand. Uh, Tom.
I would say, I, it pains me to say I'm not ready to make a decision about a lieutenant's position tonight. I don't have enough information. If if we had a vote, I'd have to vote against it because I just don't know. Not only do we need to look at twenty twenty five and what we're gonna do, you know, we can start doing some early projections on where we're gonna be in twenty twenty four. And if revenue stays up with higher investment income, that some of those other things are there, maybe we can build that in and get it a half year kind of. Rolling on that type of thing. Um, but I I don't have enough information tonight and I think I would really like to move forward with this as as. Information gathering and developing alternatives and looking forward to what what could be solutions for twenty twenty five.
Okay, Jason.
So, uh, we're in different spots and that's okay. Um, I like you as my neighbor. So I I will say where I am at, um, but I don't want to put forward a motion that's not going to pass. Because I think we're all moving in the same general direction. I mean, so so. So either. And. The the thought behind my motion would be to. Um, what's the word?
Table?
On table, but that'll be there too. To approve hiring a second lieutenant in October. But it's, if we're hiring it in October, if we, if a couple of months would allow us to get the information. That. That we need, I'm also willing to table and wait, uh, direct staff to uh work. I I also need to know from Martin. And from the chief, how much will two to, two to three months of time passing really affect the information we have? Is it really going to be, well, still, we still don't have enough information. Um, and then I have something for, uh. Yeah, so, so if 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 we're gonna be sitting here with basically the same memos and same amount of information, then I'm ready to go ahead. In three months and I'm ready to do a motion now. If we're going to have enough information to at least have things look a little clearer. We are going to be able to have another discussion, uh, because we'll put it on future agenda items to include with that. Then I'm okay waiting a month or two, but limbo, um, the time in limbo that we spend in limbo um is like dog years for people. And so I don't want to hold that out there for too long.
Okay, so. Sounds like maybe one or two months a table, get more, gather more information. Does anyone want to make a motion uh to proceed in any way, shape or form or? What's the sense here?
Well, I I I'm interested in what Martin has to say about whether a couple of months will provide the more.
Okay.
Enough information.
All right.
I would say usually by uh August, we have a pretty good handle on where the budget is. Now, there's a few things that are usually outstanding. Uh, we get some shared revenue information in September. October is usually when we get health insurance information, so that's usually kind of the last one in, um, and not always a good one. So, uh, I would say, yeah, by by Octo- by August, we usually have a pretty good. Handle on where things are gonna be in the budget. Now, I'll say, two. We do know that there are other requests from departments that are out there. We just had the fire district come and talk about another position. Their fifteen dollar an hour um situation that they're working on for their positions. I know, I know the the public works department was before the board, I think in November, talking about a new position in in twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six, maybe, I think it was twenty five. In their department, so. In in a vacuum, we will, we'll have more information, but it it's just gonna be, you're gonna be contending with more requests.
It won't be an easier decision in four months.
Jason. So so in my mind, what I'm hearing is we'll still be in the same cloudy place. And um granted, we'll be able to work on revenue um by then, but at this point, uh, I'm gonna. Put a motion forward to approve hiring a a lieutenant, a second lieutenant position. put a motion forward to approve hiring a a lu, a second lieutenant position as of October 1st, 2024. Period.
Can you say that again? What's the language?
Yeah, so so, yeah, I I'm saying I.
To fill the lieutenant's position, October 1st.
To fill the lieutenant's position. So does that mean they could start the hiring process October 1st, or?
Hiring dates starting October 1st.
So they, okay, so they could start potentially July or August.
Okay, we have a motion on table? Sorry?
So if if we don't have a conversation after this decision is made, then that's how we're proceeding.
Yep.
So that's the action that will happen.
Right, yeah. I I guess you're alluding to the point that maybe more information may become available. We may change our mind, but I think that it could be added to the agenda again.
Right. So if if that's the the deal, then that's how we're going to proceed, and we're, we'll spend that money unless there's an intervening action.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion. Okay, more discussion or alternate? We have, there is no second unless someone's offering one.
I'll second that.
All right, now we have a second. Discussion on the motion on the floor. Tim.
I'm not comfortable supporting that yet. I don't think we're in a position to be able to afford it yet. I agree it's a position we need. I just don't think we're there today to, as Martin said, make that our plan going forward.
Yeah, I I tend to agree with Tim, although I'm totally, I like the way you're going. I'm not it's a good motion. I was, guess I was just thinking that we might be making it a couple of months from now. That's all. And I I don't know, I don't, I don't want to make it and give a lot of hope and then end up having to change it. You know, take it back, and that just gets sticky, and so I'm inclined to not vote for that.
Carleen, and then Lynn.
I don't see how we can ask the police department to continue to operate at a deficit and now even more of a deficit without some end in sight, knowing that we need more information to figure out how we're going to pay for it. But I do think that we need to give the police department some certainty. And October feels like a long time away to me. And I think in between now and then, we can figure those things out, so I'm inclined to vote for it.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with Carleen. I think we're trying to find a comfortable spot, and this is an uncomfortable decision. We are not going to, there is no way that we're going to feel comfortable with any change to the budget the way that it is because it's so constrained. I think we have to start making an uncomfortable move to say, this is the end of the road on pushing this down the road. We can figure this out together. Could it be uncomfortable? Sure. Will we have to end up adjusting some things we don't want to adjust? Absolutely. But I'm going to agree with Carleen here that I think at some point, we've got to put our money where our mouth is, quite literally. And I sat here and and told the village of Oregon that if they put me in this seat, I would make sure they were safe. And I I have to to put my money where my mouth is. And so I will be voting for that motion because it at least puts something in place to say, we're going to do something, and it will be uncomfortable.
Jason. Sorry, go ahead. My fault. Go ahead, please.
Last thing I'll I'll say, and then I'll try and shut up, is I I understand the uncomfortability and wanting to wait for a couple of months to work on the the revenue side of things which we'll be doing. But that'll still be an uncertainty in one to two months. We'll be working on on the plan. We'll be moving in that direction, but we're, certainty is not going to be something we can count on in this. Just good diligent hard work and trust trusting the people.
Okay. Any other comments? I am completely sympathetic to chief's position and the rest of her staff and being understaffed. And as has been mentioned, we're not going to figure out how we're going to fund this tonight, or or even how we're going to fund this in six months. But the fact is, is that I think this position needs to be filled. And so I'm going to support the motion. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion, a second, we'll do a roll call vote.
Um, Van Campen?
Yes.
Beshin?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
No.
Peterson?
No.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Higgins?
No.
And Manki?
Yes.
So that's four yeses.
Okay, motion passes forward. Thank you all for a good conversation.
I still like all of you. We can disagree, and it's all good.
And and my vote, no vote is purely procedural, not in opposition to lieutenant.
So moving, ask a question. So we want to have these continuing conversations. So what do, what do we need, what does staff need to provide you to keep this conversation going?
Can I ask a question about that? You said there's going to be an audit in May. What 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 kind of information will that tell us?
It'll it'll be for 2023 year end, so it'll it'll audit the financial statements for 23. So we'll know where all of our we'll know for sure where how we ended at the end of 23.
And we'll know how much for sure is in that surplus. Okay.
Jason. I I can address that in future agenda items for what I'm looking for from staff.
Okay. Fair enough. All right. Item 10, report of village officers, department heads, consultants. Just for information only, no action by the village board will be taken. Reports are in the packet. A village administrator report. Questions or comments? I would say, I was going to say I'm seeing none, but I can't see anything. And it'd be, 10B, finance director report, billing permits, impact fees, connection fees collected through March 2024. Obviously, at least it's not here, but the information was in the packet. 10C, fire chief report, 2% dues report, audit report.
This was something that Chief Lenzmeyer brought up in the presentation last time. This is a program that we see, we receive revenue from the state. And this is just a report of that the district is in compliance and will continue to receive that revenue.
Okay, great. 10D, village clerk report, presidential preference primary and spring election.
I don't have anything really to say that wasn't, except for thank you.
Well, nice job. That's what I would say.
Thanks to Candy Jones, too.
Special thank you to all the election workers and all the staff and all the people you trained. They they did marvelous job.
They did. They did a great job.
Great leadership.
With a lot of training and new facilities. It was a great day, so.
I saw Candy's time card earlier this morning. It was 17 and a half hours on election day. It's probably an understatement, too.
Less than other years, though.
I will say that the Badger Books, I think we're going to see the benefits of the Badger Books getting out sooner. So I'm really looking forward to that. And like I said in my memo, one of my most favorite things about the Badger Books was getting the participation loaded the next day. I mean, that's never happened in the history of, I know that it's never happened. When I've been doing it. So that was, that was pretty incredible, and that's really good. You know, a really good service for the community, too, like knowing that your vote counted and you can see it, I think.
Thank you.
I, we should also maybe mention, thanks for the snowplow drivers because Lowzers wasn't expecting a freak snowstorm on election day, but we appreciate that not only could they get there on good roads, when they got there, it was nice and smooth, the whole thing.
Yeah, it was a mess.
And I think it's noteworthy that the village's turnout was 10% higher than the statewide turnout. Village turns out to vote, and that's something that we should all be really proud of. And and a lot of kudos for that goes to Candy and all the education she does.
Okay. Item 11, announcements in miscellaneous business, announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events, and miscellaneous business. Village board members may provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of the body shall occur. Tom and then Jason. Uh, Tim and then Jason, I'm sorry. I'm going to have trouble with.
I just wanted to point out that the Wisconsin DNR has asked people, because of the dry weather, not to have outdoor fires for the foreseeable future.
And I just want to lift up that the the artists who will be participating in the Oregon Art Fair on June 8th have been selected. And we've got 26 artists that, some local and some from around the state, who will be participating, and that will be on our website soon. So so you're going to want to be there.
Thank you. Anybody else? Future 10 items. Jason.
I'd like to have a conversation about a referendum and what should be included and how best to approach it. And definitely look to guidance from Martin and staff for that and how to don't want to do this a ton, so I want to do this well enough and for enough funds that are needed, so that way we can say to the village that your services are in a good place for the foreseeable future.
Okay. Was that addressed in? Good. Okay. Anybody else? I'm sorry, Lynn.
Then I I'd like to expand that conversation into what else we could be doing to sort of steer the village forward for the next 10 years.
Yeah, similar, not to paint the bleakest of pictures, but I think we should really see what adjustments would need to be made. You you did a nice job of alluding to it in your memo, but I think it's important for us sitting up here as well as the village to see this is what we'd be looking at in more concrete terms.
Sorry, Tim, did you mean like other like revenues or?
Well, I guess my question is more like, how have other villages managed to grow beyond some of these hurdles when your revenue is restricted? What other things have people tried to do? I know we've looked at some things in recent years.
Yep, got it. Thanks.
Carly.
And I'd like to know from the league of municipalities what they recommend as far as lobbying the legislature to to modify, change, correct, fix the shared revenue formula.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Item 12, closed session business, items for discussion or possible action under Wisconsin statutes 1985 sub 1 sub G. Confering with legal counsel for the government body who is running oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, which it is likely to be involved. Attendance is submitted to the village board and is discretion international staff or individuals whose presence necessary for the business at hand. A excessive assessment claim submitted by County Smith for 104 Clubhouse Drive, looking for motion to move a closed session. Tim and Amanda, roll call, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who was Martin distracting me?
Uh, Tim, and then Amanda.
Martin will get detention.
Um, McDaniel?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Beshin?
Yes.
Van Campen?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Manki?
Yes.
We are on closed session.
And Higgins is yes, too.
Sorry, did I forget?